Order the November eighteenth work session of the Foxfire Village Council. Let the record show that all members are present with the exception of Don Nelson. Any changes to the agenda?
Yes. My agenda item is supposed to be in the council meeting.
Okay, so we're moving the pool, okay. Any other changes? Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Any motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, number B. Let's start with me. Review of the cross connection ordinance. Lisa was going to make copies.
Yeah.
Do you have any copies?
I think we'll maybe just bring it up at the regular meeting?
Well, we gotta review it, we should review it now. So until those copies are available, let's go to the second item. I just want to review the organizational meeting, which is gonna be our next meeting, our first meeting in December, is when we will read the abstract of votes from the Board of Elections. We will start the meeting with the sitting council and then we will square in the new council members and then have our first meeting with the new council members. We will also be setting the schedule for our council meetings for the year. So it'll be an approval of minutes of past meetings.
Mayor, are there any other items on the agenda besides what you just mentioned?
For December?
Yes.
I'm sure there will be, we still have old business updates and, you know, we'll still have all of that.
Alright.
And new business if there is any.
Okay.
So there will be that as well. Let's, let me just, um, did you want a copy of those? Let me just go, what?
Cross connection?
Yes. I'm gonna go see if Lisa's got it. Apparently there's, there was a couple of changes, so she's just making a couple of changes and she'll print it off and bring it to us. So let me move that and we'll move on to council member Gilroy.
December event of the year, the Christmas tree lighting. So I gave you the site plan, remember we're coming alongside the FPOA help not take over, but the caterer and me drew a site plan. So one of the things they were concerned about from last year was not having enough light. So the pop-up tent that has the raffle stuff will have battery-powered lights. You're putting a spray, a spray lighting against this wall, I would call that a hologram, but it's something, you know, it's got like, I don't know, got Rudolph and Santa or whatever. We'll also be using our foyer area, the outside foyer area, the inside foyer area with a table up against these two doors, because they can't be locked, but we'll have something up there. Popcorn cart's different, that'll be good. Chief's fine with having Santa on their porch, just as long as we don't block the door. And Mark Popert, I don't know him, but he's supposed to be a really good guy and he really wants to be Santa, so he's hired for life. We'll have pictures with Santa. We also will have a Santa letter drop box in our foyer beginning on December first, from the first through the sixth, so people can just drop their stuff off.
In the foyer outside?
I said it, it doesn't matter to me, we can have it outside.
I would think outside, because what's-
It doesn't matter, because then if you come after four-
Exactly.
We'll have, yeah, we'll have a Santa drop box for letters, which is fine. They have tested the lights on the tree and they work, okay, that's really good. Fox Brew is gonna provide coffee and hot chocolate, okay? Now, not provide for free, I said, don't you dare, I said, you need to be get, so I think the village will pay for that, it's not gonna be some exonerating amount, and we've got, we've got all that worked out. Our face painter, when the FDOA contacted lady, she does have a charge. When they told her what it was for, she said she would do it for free. So I'm gonna set up a tip jar for her, because I don't really, I don't know what it was, I think it was a couple hundred or something like that, and I don't want us to pay for that, but I really don't want her doing it for free, for free. So, did I already say this on the restaurant board, we'll have it out by the road, probably on Thursday, the fourth. It'll say Village Tree Lighting, the date and the time, residents welcome. Because we're not trying to attract people from six counties. So we had fifty people last year, we're somewhere between maybe sixty and seventy-five this year, and it doesn't really need to get a whole lot bigger than that probably. That's it.
Oh, you have any music?
Yeah, oh yeah, they got music, microphone, all that kinda stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, yep.
And this is from, what's the time of the event?
Five to six.
Five to six?
On the sixth.
Okay.
Sally, is that right, five to six?
I believe that's-
Yeah, five to six. We got it.
The face painting is going to be in the foyer and along with-
There's a kid's craft table of some sort. It's not messy, because I was a little, I think it's hand markers and maybe coloring some wood ornaments or something, I'll know more about that, but we'll get another meeting on Tuesday and I'll find out a lot more about that.
Alright. Okay.
But I think, I think it'll be fine.
Alright.
And there is no rain date, so we're not gonna have rain.
Okay. Great, well that's good.
Yeah.
Looking forward to that. So let's go back to our review of the cross connection program ordinance. And we are reviewing this, so hopefully it will be adopted in our council meeting after this meeting at four thirty. Now, we added definitions.
That was one change we made, correct? And that was on the, just an advice of, I believe it was a council said it, or the attorney. Because we hadn't, we hadn't been in there originally and then decided it's becoming, getting kinda lengthy that we would eliminate that, but you have to, so there's no, no difference is what we're actually, what these, the terminology means. So yeah, that was put back in. And then the second change was, of course, in the enforcement section of the eighteen dash twenty-four.
Would you say one?
The second change we made, everything else is the same except for the two changes in the definitions and also section eighteen twenty-four. We cleaned that up also and, so that's a section that you wanna, you probably wanna, well, read through the whole thing. Like I said, everything's what was presented at the last work session and actually it's been out for a while. But the change was made in the enforcement section.
Twenty-four. Take the second page from the back.
Yes.
Did you look into a company who is going to monitor?
Right, we actually had, it was probably about a year ago at this time. Jesse contacted one firm, it's used by most of the other water purveyors in the area, contacted them and he actually has some numbers from their sales rep. And then also contacted a second company, can't exact, I don't recall where they were from, but no decision was made at the time because of the fact that we felt that the inventory of devices in our system didn't warrant having this come up, these firms come on, because what they're gonna do is they'll take care of all the notifications. Certified tester installs the backflow preventer, you know, the homeowner's required to submit a copy of the test to us, we keep it for record. That will be then forwarded on to, actually taken care of by, hopefully by the firm who hired the third-party firm. And then on an annual basis, they will send out a renewal notice that the device has to be tested. They also handle any questions, they handle the certification or monitoring the certification of the testers. They handle the entire program, so we just don't have the staff to do that. But we do have to put the inventory together. We come out of the past year through voluntary efforts of some residents and also when the county building department gives us the finalized permit, it'll indicate whether there's a backflow preventer, a testable backflow preventer on the premises. And the state statute requires that all in-ground irrigation systems that are hooked up to our system, they require a backflow preventer. So those will be pretty easy, because now we can go back to the building permits, actually to add to the inventory just by observation of the property. Or obviously, we'll pick those up. But that's something that I think should take place well, hopefully, quickly, as it, you know. The council will after the first year have to decide whether they want, as I said, a third-party to handle it. I would recommend doing, doing it that way, we just don't have the administrative means to do something like this. They also handle any questions, if someone calls that a third-party and has a question whether or not they need a backflow, they will provide them with, like I said, with requirements of backflow preventer, determine whether they're required to have one, and then set them up. It's all, you know, turnkey. And we just get a report, you know, probably, I'm guessing, can determine how often or with the frequency of a report, but I would think an annual report just of how many they added during the year, how many tests have been done and whether, how many people are not in compliance. The enforcement, of course, that will fall on our hands, once we're notified that someone is not in compliance, there are requirements in the enforcement section, you know, we do give you, you know, thirty days for the correction, but don't, and again, it's, there's a, depending on the degree of hazard, I guess, you could say, there's a thirty-day notice that's given in writing and they have thirty days to comply. If we come across a backflow condition, or I should say cross connect, cross-connection condition within the system, we automatically disconnect you. I mean, that's a, so if we go out there and someone has a, one of the older wells or if there's a well hooked up to our system and we're aware of it, we'll go out and we'll, they either cut the line between the well and the house or we'll pull the meter, because you can't, it's just, it's illegal and it's, it's, it's just not, it's not something that you have in your system. So like I said, if there is a cross connection and we're aware of it, we do give notification to it. The notification is for, most of this pertains to if they fail to do the testing, we notify you, hey, missed your test, maybe you got the thirty days to get the test done, like I said. It's taken a lot to put this all together, but I think, like I said, I, it's, I think it's something that should stand up and it's, and I said, and bring us into where we need to be in compliance with this.
I have a question.
Okay.
It sounds like we need a third-party to handle this.
Yes, the administration.
That's what we talked about.
But do we have any idea what they're gonna ask?
Yes, we do. I have those numbers here.
We talked about it.
Right, last fall, about this time, we did contact-
Yeah, I know you mentioned, I just didn't hear, I just didn't hear any numbers.
Right. I think at the time I may have, I've got the information, Jesse has the information. Those numbers maybe needed to be updated and like I said, we'll have a better idea of how many devices out there in the system and, and the prices, you know, based on that. But yes, well, you'll have the numbers, the council will have the numbers so they can make a decision of who they wanna use, if they wanna use a third-party, but like I said, I would highly recommend using a third-party, because we, we just don't have the administration and we don't, you know, we, I don't believe we can administer the program.
I think we talked about that and we all agreed-
We did, Athlean, we did.
Well, I would think that number one would be a water department expense and then, and then if we have to, I don't know if there's gotta be, depending on what the cost is.
Yes, the cost was not cost prohibitive, I remember at the time, it's not, you know, it's not cost prohibitive.
But water rates would have to somehow support that.
Well, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Right, but I don't believe that's gonna be the case and get you the numbers, at least some preliminary numbers that you can use for budgeting for next year, you know, when you do the budget, you'll have the numbers in place.
Okay, so then, when we pass this, I mean, this looks really good, then it would go into effect when we pass it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so it wouldn't just be numbers for next year, it'd be whatever we would need for the six months that we have in this fiscal?
If we hire them right away, we may, I mean, we could wait, to wait till it depends.
I would suggest it depends on how quickly that you can build up the, how quickly you can build up the inventory of known properties that need backflow preventers. Like I said, we can have from the building permits, we can pull it off of that, through observation by driving up and down the street, you can probably get a pretty good idea.
When they, when you put in a pool-
Right.
Do you, is part of that installation of a pool a backflow automatically?
Not automatically. If the pool is connected to our system, if you have an automatic refill on your pool, where the, it's the level on the pool drops down and has to be refilled, opens a valve, water from, from your house, from our system goes into your pool, that is a backflow, that's a possible backflow condition and that is a cross connection. So you would, and the county would have noted-
They would have mandated that in the installation of the pool.
They would have mandated, if you built your pool, they would say, I see you have a direct connection to your domestic service, we need a backflow preventer, they would install the backflow preventer. At that time, they should have sent us a copy of the, of the testing of the device, because it's, the device is tested when it's first installed and annually after that, they should be sending that to us.
So do we-
Some residents do, others don't. A pool itself is a freestanding, it's an air gap, there's no way for our water to get into a swimming pool. There is the possibility that someone takes a hose and if they're standing there with the hose and, and the hose is not submerged in the water, there's an air gap. Air gap is a natural backflow preventer, just like your sink in your house. There's a gap between the, your faucet and the bowl of your sink, you can fill your sink, it'll never reach the top of your faucet, a natural air gap. That's what swimming pools are supposed to have. If they don't have it and someone says, well, I take my hose and I hold it there, I put it on the side, but it never goes into the water, there's, we cannot force, you know, we can't make you put a backflow preventer in. A lot of pool companies, what they do is they have fixed plumbing, so you would take your hose, connect it to a piece of pipe, a piece of pipe comes up and stays above the water, and so there's always that natural air gap, no different than a sink in your house. Some pool companies don't do that, homeowners can do it themselves if they wanted to. The danger is, you take a hose, you throw the hose over the side of the pool-
Right.
It gets submerged, we have some kinda incident where a main break, someone opens a fire hydrant, or you could have a bone material interruption of service and the pressure drops down, the pressure drops down, that hose is in the swimming pool and the swimming pool's at a higher elevation and the, and the break or the interruption lowers the pressure of the system, it just siphons the water out of the pool.
Right.
That's untreated water, you know, and so that becomes a backflow condition.
So we can't-
And there's no way we can, we cannot go in and say, you know, if there's, I guess we could, because we do have, we, in this ordinance, when you read through the details, that we have, if we see a potential out there for a possible cross connection. So for some reason, we're out by someone's house and they have a swimming pool, we notice the hose is submerged, we tell them, buddy, you gotta pull it out, they pull it out, explain them what happens and the danger, and that's a backflow, you can't have that, state statutes says you can't have it. We go back, for some reason, we go back to their house because they complained about a high bill or something like that, go back and sure enough, it's back and again submerged, that's twice. Now, we could then say, listen, we can't come out here all the time, keep traffic here. If you've got a problem keeping the hose out of the swimming pool, we can then go in because there's the potential of a cross connection and it's, and we've seen, you know, we could go in and, and tell them that they need a backflow preventer on the premises.
So we can't, man, we can't mandate that all the pools have, have an air gap fillable installation?
I wish we could, I think if we could, we would probably be contested, because my argument, if I owned a pool, would be, hey, I don't fill my pool that way, I, you know, I never put the hose near the pool. And so I have a freestanding vessel that's not connected to your, to your system, every time I fill it, there's always the air gap.
Now, if someone had, let me ask this, if someone has a pool and they have an irrigation system, which if they have an irrigation system, they have a backflow preventer-
If it's in-ground, so, just like we saw in the video, last month, we put the video up there and showed you how, you know, the in-ground, go ahead.
Let me finish my, because an irrigation system typically, I think they're all in-ground, I don't think any of them are not.
Some people drag hoses out, they hook a hose to a sprinkler system and drag it around.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying they have an irrigation system.
Oh, in-ground, yes.
Okay, so they have an irrigation system, they have a backflow preventer, they have a pool.
Yes.
Does that, does that backflow preventer prevent all cross contamination?
It would if the, something, we have, this goes back several years ago, maybe ten, fifteen years ago, the village said, if you have the in-ground, and it was also, just wasn't our community, most communities said, listen, we wanna keep the irrigation system separate from your domestic service into your house.
So if you have two meters?
So we're having two meters. And the other reason for that was people would complain, if you lived in the city and you only have one meter, you fed your irrigation system and also fed your domestic service to your house, if you're on a sanitary sewer system, you're paying your sewer bill based on your water bill. So people were saying, wait a minute, I'm paying more for, on my bill, but that water's going to the ground, it's not going into the community wastewater treatment plant. And so they, we kinda got away from that in this, in our community by saying, listen, we don't, we don't require you to have two separate services, so you could have, I said, there's a period of time where we did, so you may have a house that's, the irrigation system is in-ground, is on a meter, it's a separate service and you could have a meter for your house domestic service. And we would require the-
So given, let me, so if they have one meter-
Yes.
And they have a backflow, backflow preventer, because they have an irrigation system-
Right.
That prevents any cross contamination?
Yes, it does, it prevents it.
No matter what?
That's true.
Okay, that's all I needed to say.
What we're trying to do is keep the water from the resident's home or from their plumbing from coming back into our system, because once it goes to the meter, we have no control over it.
Okay, alright.
Okay?
Okay. So this will be on our council-
Yes, we read through it, I've, I've probably read through this too many times now, so, but I couldn't, I, I say that because I may not be looking at it from, with a new set of eyes. So if anyone sees any grammatical mistakes or mistakes in grammar, or if there's a misspelling or something doesn't make sense, please let us know, but I've gone through this-
So this is the same except for the definitions and like you said, enforcement?
In the enforcement section, yes. In the enforcement section, like I said, I think it's a, I think it's a better, it's now that it's been rewritten, I think it's probably a, a, a better way to handle it than we had handled before, because we had very stiff penalties, you know, and the penalties are stiff here, but they weren't quite as onerous as the earlier penalties.
Okay, now, does that mimic the county's penalty?
Yes, it does.
Okay, this new one does?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, okay. So this will go on to there, anyone have any comments on this right now? No. So we'll just power read this between now and four thirty?
Okay.
And if we have any changes, we'll approve it with the changes as we discussed.
I just got one, I just, how hard is it to build up an inventory of properties that have backflow? Because really, it all hinges on figuring out who has them or who should have them.
I can't give you a real definitive answer.
Okay, I just, I didn't know if we had a mechanism that allows you to do it.
The only one way we can do, we can go back to all the building permits. Another way is just through observation, you know, just drive down, you know, Jesse does drive the system, you know, once a month in order to pull, we have auto meter reads, he drives by, picks up the meter read off of electronics, off the, off the meter head. At that time, he could view, I think he's got a pretty good idea, you know, he's been with this-
He probably does.
Well, I would think anyone whose water usage goes up significantly in the summer, they obviously have irrigation, now whether it's in-ground irrigation or they're just sprinkling, that's different.
I think what we found, you know, this is, this past summer, we put, when we sent out the Consumer Confidence Report in July, we put a message in there about backflow preventers and requested, please send us some test results, if you have a backflow preventer, please enter into our program. That was the second year we did it, we did it, actually, the year before that, we did it. And we actually have a pretty good response all along. I think most people, they're gonna do the right thing.
They get it, yeah.
If, you know, if I have a backflow preventer, I've got an irrigation system, I'm thinking, well, my house is three or four years old, I've never had it tested, and the more they hear about this, the, I'm sure the, there'll be a lot of people volunteering some of the results and the plumbers, the certified testers supposed to, they have to keep a copy, the homeowner keeps a copy and then we, or get the third copy of it. The other thing is, there's a packet that was handed out last month's meeting, the month before, it shows some things that we can put on our website, you know, if people have questions, do I need a backflow preventer or not, and there's a, I'm not gonna do it too fast right now, they can tell you about this, you know, about backflow preventers if you want, but there's a, I think that's the other thing, give it to Lisa, she can update the website with that, there's a message in there about the statute, if someone wants to read a statute, there's a, like I said, I think what's, we get the message out, yeah, if we get the message out there, I think most people, they do the right thing, they want, everybody, you know, it's, you're protecting yourself, you're protecting your neighbors and you should have, have, and the other is, the liability risk with the property owners. So if I have a backflow condition and I make my neighbor sick, they have, they have civil recourse against me, so it's not against the water utility, because all we do is administer it. And all the state does is say, here's the law, the water purveyor has to have a program in place to administer the program. Everything relies, everything falls on the consumer. And so just to protect themselves for the, you know, I think, I shouldn't say that, don't quote me, I think the cost of a backflow preventer to have it tested is seventy-five dollars, you have it done once a year. The village, just so you're your own knowledge here, we have one on this building, we have one on the pool, we have one on the village park, and we, we test them, we don't test them, we have a certified tester come in and they test them and, and like I said, it's up to the, it's up to the property owners.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Before we adjourn, I need to go back to the tree lighting for just a second.
Okay. I don't have anything to add to our discussion so far, so back to Councilman Gilroy.
Sally informed me the tree lighting is from six to seven, not five to six.
Six to seven P M. on December second? Six to seven P.M. on December 2nd?
No, December 6th.
Six. Okay, great, and the signs will say that, I am sure.
I'm sure, I will get the signs right.
Well, plus the signs that the FPOA puts out too, right?
Yeah. I think they're already out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes?
Mayor, just other, on water department business, the well, the new well number thirteen?
Yes.
And we had a brief interruption of service over the weekend, I can bring that up at the...
Council meeting.
At the council meeting, if, if that...
Well, I believe the well is our own business, so...
Okay.
All right. Okay. No more comments?
No.
Okay. Time for any public comments? For the four people that are in the audience? No? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Non-been, meeting adjourned at 2:32.